Sorry, just one second.
Thank you all for taking the time to be here tonight and for coming out in support of the Grand County Library. We are here tonight representing the State Library Committee and hundreds of committee members who have expressed their support for the Grand County Library. I'm Stephanie Thompson and I know my name you. My family has been a part of this community for about five generations and I am a dedicated and committed community member. I work to support youth in the community. I have four children that I want to raise in this community. And I believe that the Grand County Library is essential to helping our community stay active, relevant, and vibrant. I am proud of the heart of the community that I grew up in and the community has changed a lot since I was a kid. We've lost many opportunities and I don't want to continue. The schools were already small and they're getting smaller. Where losing families were essential to the future of our family. And tonight I'm joined by Julianne Skidmore.
NeNe, I'm truly thrilled to be here and a part of this community. We are going to have some nights up here to work to help the general service. I'm also appreciating that I'm a library enthusiast. Even the search for residents on those fall days, I would pick up groceries and go to libraries and love those. Well, I was terribly grateful for evil accident. There were no libraries in the city nor the town in the community. I'm happy to join my voice to save our library committee and then grant county courts to promote and keep our library open. Simply because the county no longer pay for all the services it provides. Just like our personal lives, box are empty free and income is saving more than these. Costs overwhelming the funds. There are higher costs of services. There are increases in insurance benefits and we're facing a lot of federal support. While we recognize the county is facing this naked budget challenges, the library is still an essential asset to our family. More than nine years, directors and the Grand County have funded the library. Today, more than seven hundred eighty-five community members have already signed a petition in support of the library. We are here tonight to advocate that the county's goal and the public support its A.L. Library Committee as we work to identify another struggle that we can go ahead with. You might ask why the county with more than eighty percent of our budget prepared to fund the library? It's a good question. And here's the simple answer. Eighty-nine percent of the funding of corporations is given to us for specific projects, roads, pool, forest service, emergency maintenance. And that money needs to be spent on projects in contained. At least eleven percent of the county budget goes under ten million dollars with the county courts to allocate. The only money they can ensure is where it's been. A lot of this money is committed to required services, the financial work of the county, building tickets, the county court itself, attorneys, the basic building lots to fund the work of the county. After those costs, there are just about four million left to spend on therapy, like the library, farm services, share, and more. This year, those costs were almost 1.5 million more than the available amount. In order to balance the budget, the Grand Court decided to eliminate the budget of the library after a year of twenty-two and six. This year, the county court used half of its savings to balance the budget for this year. Even by today, we still have programs and services because they had to. Animal damage program, shared patrol, shared vehicle, janitor, or public health support. And they had those wages and ten management positions among other reductions. Next year, there's still going to be less money. It won't be enough savings for the costs. That means next year, the county will need to continue to review services. We're going to face some very waiting times. This is why they decided to stop funding the Grand County Library. Without a new form of funding, the library will close after a few weeks. This is why.
The Grand County Library has been a part of this community for more than nine years. The library services everyone in the community with or without a library card. The library is an incredible part of the community. It provides free access to information, internet, public media space, support for finding employment. It supports early childhood development and keeps elders engaged and active. Here is just a sample of what the Grand County Library provides. And there is a more comprehensive list that should have got if not, there was some more in back. More than 100,000 books are in the library collection. You get access to state library systems and the Grand County Library to sixteen other libraries in Oregon. Give you access to ten million, yes, million additional books, videos, DVDs, and more. There are education opportunities through internships. The Grand County Library is located in Grand County where students can take doctor tests. There are summer reading programs for our youth. They provide meeting spaces and internet access for medical and mental health appointments. They do personal book delivery to help out any vehicles. They read to preschool programs without library access. They have partnerships with all of the schools, Grant Union Junior and Senior High School, Davis School, Long Creek School, Monument School, Percy School, Santa Fe Elementary, Fumble Elementary, and preschools. I can go on, but you give where I'm headed. The library does a lot for our community and we have a lot to lose. And we know that by closing the library, there's other losses that will come. We know that when we close libraries, it has a negative financial impact on communities, including decreased property values, lost workforce development benefits, and a higher cost of services for individuals who lose access to free resources like the internet and doctrine. A group of volunteers created the Save Our Library Committee. Our mission is to identify alternative funding options to keep the library open and serve the people of Grand County. The outstanding public turnout at the first meeting clearly indicates public support for library services in Grand County. There is about 200 community members that joined us. The Save Our Library Committee gathered more than 785 signatures on a petition. I have them all right here to save the Grand County Library. More than thirty-five members have joined our cause and our reunion. If you would like to join, we would really appreciate and welcome all of you. We are currently developing a feasibility study that will conduct a community survey to help us understand how we will use the library and what we would like it to be. Again, you all should have gotten the survey. We appreciate you as well done out. And if you haven't, please, please take the time to do so. There should be something in the back if you don't receive one. We hired a professional consultant to help us understand the financial opportunities and costs keeping the library open. And she will provide or she will guide us to understand the state requirements to develop an alternative funding source by creating a library district. And finally, we met with all three members of the county court to share our concerns and ask for their support. Over the past couple of weeks, members of our committee have met with Judge Hampshire, Commissioner Ral, and Commissioner Wilson. Thank you for taking the time to meet with us. And thank you to each of you, if you have shown up at city council meetings, our committee meetings, and talked to the community. Each of our county court members expressed concern at closing the library and support for finding a way to fund it with money outside of the county budget. And thank you for that support. At each of these meetings, the Save Our Library Committee members shared with the court our work to raise the money to conduct a feasibility study and to begin the exploration of identifying options for funding. The two primary options being, one, a library district. A library district is an independent body with a separate funding source paid for by taxes and electric parks and rec in the higher districts and run by an independent governing body. The benefit of a library district is that it completely removes all the management liability from the county and puts it in the hands of the community. The other option being a five-year operating company. Eleven will cover the operating costs of the library for five years. But it keeps the responsibility for management of the library with the county court. Our request to the court was simple, to support the Save Our Library Committee, to do the work necessary to find another way to fund the library. That includes the community survey, conducting a feasibility study, including a budget for the library, facilities, and maintenance, and gaining the support of the communities in Grand County. And after we are done with our work, we will come back to the county court and present what we learned and our recommendations for supporting the Grand County Library. Each of our county commissioners said that they would absolutely support our work.
Thank you, county court, for agreeing to support the work of our Save Our Library Committee so that we can conduct a feasibility study and listen to thoughts and ideas of the community from you. Thank you to all of you that are here for all the others who supported the library and want to continue to see the library open our entire community. Please remember, surveys, taking the extra surveys for friends and neighbors, and if you can, join the Save Our Library Committee. You can join us without entering that you're only in the lineup. You can also come to the meetings and help support your work. There's going to be quite a bit of pressure for us to complete this feasibility study. So even five minutes, an hour, one day a month, and whatever time you have to give, we will gladly accept and appreciate it. We just want to say thank you to all of you for coming to show that you're going to support the library because this is a big deal for us to keep. Thank you very much.
All the petitions. This is just the letter of support from the library advisory committee.
Okay.
There's Mitch's letter.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Now we'll go back to our testimony, Harriet. Sorry to keep you waiting. And then you just start to talk. And we'll have today's board and Patrick Wales submiss. What do you think?
So if I'm speaking in Long Creek, then this is what we have written in Long Creek, so anyway. My name is Denise Porter and I am teacher at the Long Creek School and also a member of the Grand County Library. And honestly, he also, and we would like to come to the library and see how some of these please. And I'm glad to read the letter that our school library wrote. And we all wrote, all of our plates were letters from several of our staff members. And so we have a council, but anyway, we kept this one because we wanted to discuss it. We figured we could hit all of the things that we wanted to talk about. So, dear community officials and the people of Grand County, I know this letter burns me well. I'm writing not just as the librarian for the Long Creek School District, but also as someone who grew up in the library. Someone who remembers what it felt like to walk through the doors of our local library and feel instantly at home. I recently heard there is talk of shutting down the public library and I cannot say quite. Closing it would be unfortunate and would take something truly special away from our community. As cliche as it may sound, libraries are more than just shelves of books. They are places where people connect, learn, and grow. Libraries are a place where kids first discover the magic stories. Where students find quiet corners to study and where families come together for storytime and crafts. I still remember sitting cross-legged on carpet as a child with my siblings, listening to the stories being read aloud, making beautiful art with other kids, and feeling that sense of relief that can only come from the baby part or something bigger. Those are memories that have stayed with me my entire life. Now, as an adult, I have come to love and understand more of what books and other things have to offer. I am the librarian at Long Creek School District and I see those same lines happening to a new generation. I see the shy kids light up when they find the right book. I see parents and grandparents coming in to help little ones learn their first words. Back in my hometown, I have seen people using the library to apply for jobs, take online classes, and simply have a safe, warm place to eat. These are small things that made a truly big difference. The kind of difference you cannot measure with numbers or budgets. From an educator point of view, libraries are essential. They support our schools in ways many people will never see. They help children build reading skills, curiosity, and confidence. When we work together, school and public libraries side by side, we help raise strong readers and light new learners. When a community loses a library, it loses a partner in education, creativity, and connection. But we hope that libraries remind us who we are. They remind us that learning belongs to everyone, not just those who can't afford it. Libraries are one of the few places in our society where everyone, regardless of age and cultural background, is welcomed and valued. They are centers of learning, creativity, and connection. For students, they spark curiosity and build literacy. For adults, they provide access to lifelong learning, job resources, and technology that may otherwise be out of reach. For seniors, they offer community, purpose, and a place to stay engaged with the world. A public library is an equalizer, a quiet champion of opportunity. We know times are tough and budgets are tight, but once a library is gone, it is not easy to bring it back. The hard it gives to a town cannot be replaced. I hope our community come together and see how much we would lose if the door closed were good. Let's not let this be the ending of our library story. Let's make it a new chapter of hope, support, and pride in what we still have to share with one another. With all my heart for learning. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Grand County. I'm Patrick Goffe Gales and I'm running for Oregon State Governor. And I want to say to our libraries, because our libraries give us a lot of inside resources into our committees. Our history, where we came from, and everything else. Even out at the first, at the US Forest, they have history of Grand County out there, kind of big giant book that's about four inches thick. We need to preserve our history here in Grand County because Grand County is one of the most unique places in the state. It has a lot of great places that you can go and see historical sites. But you won't know about it if you don't go to the library and find out exactly where these places are. Because that's where a lot of our information is kept. A lot of our young kids go to the library to learn, to see, to explore, and to find out who they are in these make-believe worlds so they can actually enjoy these books and these journeys that we're all on. So I'm willing to do whatever it takes to help to save our library. I just did a little bit of math. And it costs approximately $32 per person in all of Grand County to keep the library open for one year. That's about $240,000 by 7,500 residents of Grand County. That's not very much. I'm not saying that we need to do more taxes. We are being taxed enough. But I think there are programs out there that we can find grants. We can actually connect with other libraries that have the financial means. A brand new library just got built in Gresham, Oregon, on the corner of Eastman and Division. That is like several millions of dollars. It's huge. Why can't we get some of this funding for our rural libraries so we can actually have and keep our legacy here in Grand County?
Hello, everyone. I guess you can hear me.
A little bit closer.
Anyhow, as many of you might know, I was just appointed to city council. And I'm also the president of the John Day Senior Center. And I'm here this evening as just a citizen of Grand County and of John Day. I support the library. I grew up in the library. I love it. I love learning. My concern obviously is the funding. And I am kind of conservative in my fiscal thinking. I want the library to survive. But I just have some questions as to how that's going to happen. I think we're all taxed enough. I agree with Patrick. I don't know what the answer is, but I do have questions. And every time I ask a question for people running with petitions, I get an "I don't know" or, you know, I can't seem to get any answers as far as money figures, the library foundation. I know they're sitting on some money that was supposed to be earmarked for a new building. I'd like to know more about that. So if anybody's involved with that, if they could meet with me sometime, I just have some questions. But I know the county's been pretty strapped. I fought during all the budget meetings for the Senior Citizen Center. You know, money isn't going to fall like manna from heaven, so we need to find a solution to this. And I personally don't know what it is, but I'm willing to listen to anybody or talk to anybody. I would love to keep the library if we can find a way.
Thank you very much, Becky. Thanks, Becky. Ryan, somebody over.
Oh, great to have you.
Well. If I had known they were all, I would have put us, separated us, but they were all together, family of family reeds. Well, I guess we'll start. My name is Ryan McNabb. I'm here tonight to ask you to keep funding the Grand County Library. I teach at Daville School. I live in Canyon City. I'm a dad. I'm somebody who's proud to call Grand County home. I teach science. I teach shop. I teach forest management. And like a lot of kids around, a lot of folks around here, I spend a lot of time on the road getting to and from work. And I use the library there as I'm driving to Daville back and forth every day, listening to audiobooks. Right now, I'm going to do a really fun Right now, I'm listening to a really fun Stephen King book. Like, sure, raise your hand if you've read Stephen King. Like, uh, I love Stephen King. But, but just the driving, having the audiobooks keeps my attention on the road. Um, I use that as a definite resource. And also for my kids, like, I used to spend hours and, uh, all the time reading bedtime stories from my kids. They, and they're now awesome readers. I think a lot has to do with the fact that we spent so much time reading to them, um, prioritizing, prioritizing books to them, that now I don't get to read to them much anymore because they, they have that pretty well covered themselves. Um, but then I use, I use the library also, like, I, my, we have a family small hobby farm. With, um, produce and goats and chickens and sometimes sheep and turkeys and orchards. I use the library there for, you know, how to manage those animals, how to manage the land, how to manage finances. I use the library as a resource. Um, if we lose the library, we're losing the last real community resources that serves everyone. Families, kids, farmers, teachers, job seekers. If you take that away, we're seeing the wrong message that learning and the community don't matter. And I've, I've talked with both of you about the library in the past and you called me to sit down and talk about it. I know you want to keep the library. Um, I just, I worry, like, we have this meeting that is, we're on the verge of maybe losing the library and that, that tears my soul. Um, I don't want, I don't want you to take the easy way out and just cut funding. I want us to work with the, with the groups that are digging for funding to save the library, to keep the library functioning, keep the library, keep us active with books, keep us access to all these books throughout the, throughout the state. Um, and, you know, don't take the easy way out. Don't, like, and I worry that if the library closes, there will be a reaction, like, there, like, the words for the pool, not to bring that sort of subject back to us. Um, but if we lose the library, it's time for this county to remember it will serve on, on your, on your term in office as something that happened. I don't want that hanging over anybody's head. Um, I would just like for us to realize the library is now, it's not a luxury. It's a lifeline to families and, and just people who seek, seek education and community. So, um, with that, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
One, why should we keep funding it? What is the point? Many people may be asking these questions. When talking about funding our county library, many people turn their heads in denial. However, many of these people do not understand what our library offers and what we're values. My name is Ari McNabb, and I'm an eighth grader at a Grant County High School. On conference, I gave about a hundred bucks for my gift. I believe that our library is very important and a good accommodation throughout town. Our library is finding a safe and fun place for everyone. It has always had something for everyone, a selection of books, movies, items on the desk, including pencils and bullet marks and stickers for kids. Some of you may be thinking that, well, they're kids. You've got libraries in your schools where you can read books. However, our libraries and schools are extremely small, provide very few books and very few options. Additionally, they are not open to the public for people who don't go to the schools there and still want to read. Our libraries additionally though, are providing a program for our Grand Indians High School. They are allowing high school kids and middle school kids to come, to come to our library to check out books. This program has, has helped very much with kids who may not have the time to go to the library or the ability to be able to get there in the first place. Many of the kids at my school read maybe two books every three months and no books in the summer. This library program has provided kids the option to read six books every few months and get to read books in the summer. If this program ends, many kids will read very less books and they will become less educated. I believe that our contribution in this community is very important. Personally, I would have no books to read. For even though we have books at home, I depend on the library because I've read all of the books at home multiple times. I prefer to read new books, some books that I've not read yet, so I can explore language more.
Close to. Yeah.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for helping support our library.
The library. If we share the library, note. And the vicinity, note. In the sun, it would be. Close the library because. And it would. When I went to. In Chris, the library gave me a picture of her. I didn't know. Just, she said, the next few people had a fascinating manner of standing. What I remember. The time she carried her kids. The library was a great place to read books and often film and edit things.
Next up, we have Jim Merrimer. Start speaking.
Thank you, everybody. I'm going to read this thing.
Jim, hold your mic close.
What?
Hold your mic close, please.
Our library was built in, or rented or whatever in nineteen fifty-seven. A few things have changed in the past sixty-eight years, whether we like it or not. The world and all of us in it are connected. Local, national, and international conflicts and solutions are at our fingertips. The computer, internet, cell phones, iPad have changed our lives. Technology, artificial intelligence, the cloud, with their vulnerabilities and strengths, will continue to change, but the library will maintain its qualities and values as a cultural center for rural communities across the United States. Books, readers, young and old, writers, authors, publishers are the core foundation. But libraries are becoming an engine of innovation, research, education, economic development, science, agriculture, forestry, let's see, conservation and job creation, and health science, science, language, and international relations and the arts. The library is also a quiet, safe place where a student can do his homework, home homework, whatever the season. Hot and cold, if the economy is up or down, or if we are feeling good or bad, our library is the fabric and strength of our rural community. We can sometimes take our library for granted, but our county cannot survive without it. In the, in this changing world, the internet may fail. But what makes the library different is that it is like the air we breathe. It remains free to all of us. So, thank you. I've lived here for fifty years. I'm writing a book. If I ever get it done and it makes a million dollars, I'll build a new library myself. Well.
Okay, this will be quick. Remember the last time I was here, I said, when rural lost its libraries, the world went into darkness, the dark ages. Well, this time, I have a little exercise for you. Kind of like halftime. Um, everybody that's for the library, stand up. If you can't stand because you're crippled or, that's not the right word to use. Because you can't stand. If you can't stand, don't worry about it. Okay, um, you can be seated. All those that don't want the library, please stand up. Well, look at the people sitting down in the back who don't have chairs. I love it. That's all I came to say. Thank you.
Andrew, also.
I feel emotional and it surprises me. I feel like Mr. Merrimer just said it so succinctly that I can't really add anything to that. But I stand here because my father, who is ninety-four, is lifeline, is a library. He gets books delivered every week. He reads six or seven books a week. And he lives at Ballard Hugh, senior, or Ballard Hugh Center. And he can't imagine not having the books to read. And it keeps him sane. I appreciate everything that this committee has done to come this far. And it makes complete sense that the next step would be the feasibility study so we can look at what our community wants and move ahead. Because I believe there are people out there that could donate substantial amounts of money. And it's just connecting the people together. So I think this is an extremely doable project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Flare Ray.
Hi, how are you?
Well.
Thank you. Um, the first thing that I'd like to do, I'm about to say. Is read something. Uh, it's from a neighbor and a friend.
Closer, please.
Okay. It's from a neighbor and a friend, you know, Vernon and, um, she, I read this in July as well, as she can't get here to speak. So she said, her name is Patricia Ross Bear. Patricia Bear Ross, excuse me. For me, it's hard to believe keeping our library is even an issue. This is one of the most important institutions for our community for all ages. Instead of having grandiose ideas, we can, we can live within our means, keep what we have, make improvements, and expand them in order, in order to help. I hope we'll make wise decisions and not lose our library like we lost the swimming pool because the fund's too big for our budgets. So that's, that's Pat's. Please, um, see if I can put my thoughts. Our family, as, um, my husband and I, we have six children. And we've lived in quite a few different communities because of our work situation. But, um, in every community we've been in, there's been a common theme. Um, you can see how governments are prioritized by what's there, by what the community boasts. Um, and in many places, we see, but this is, I'm going to speak about the communities, but also about the schools. We've seen, um, almost in every community, in every school, we've seen sports hugely prioritized. Um, there are new ball fields, you know, there's constantly being improvements made. And that's expensive. That's a lot of money. Um, whether they bring in much money is another thing. Some places they have and some they haven't. But, um, in the schools, it's the same way. The sports have always been prioritized. The arts, uh, music, everything else has suffered, um, or the, the things that aren't sports. So, I mean, that's something to think about. Um, I don't know, I don't know how many are spent here exactly. And I'm thinking that I understand that if the library was a separate library district, then it would, it would get a portion of money that is purposed for the parks for, um, is that correct? No, maybe I don't understand that at all. Sorry about that. Um, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking if we can prioritize sports that, um, you know, a lot of people in the community, I mean, a lot of people do get out and you see a lot of people at the ball field and, but it's a relatively small amount of children that benefit from that because not everybody has the money to do it, can buy the equipment, can even make, if there's tryouts, they can't even necessarily make tryouts. It's always been this way. Um, my, one of my thoughts is, is, um, you know, whatever funding goes that way, maybe some of it can go to the library to help out, even if it's just park. Maybe, maybe as like the gentleman said earlier, um, the two, two thirty-nine that is budgeted for the library every year, maybe, maybe, um, maybe we have, you know, I wouldn't mind paying an extra twenty dollars of my taxes that was library dedicated. Library dedicated. I mean, you know, I put way much more than that in the tank several times a week. But then take some of the stuff that's going over to the parks and put it toward the library. Just keep the library that we have. Nobody's asking, nobody's asking for a big chance in the library. Everybody's just asking to keep the resource that we have, keep it intact, keep it fed, keep it sheltered, and just let it be there. Because the reality over here too that we've seen is you can't always get in to utilize things. So we don't need something bigger than what we have. Um, and I, I, the way that we understand it from what we've done with the library is that they, they can manage to help everybody that comes in, to do the best that they can. But they, maybe they need a few more hours, that type of thing. But, um, there's not, it's unconscionable to think that there's not a way to do this and a way that's not going to break anybody's pocketbook. And then the multitude of kids, multitude of families that don't, um, you know, I mean, that, for me, when I, we came, we moved to John Day a couple of years ago, but we've been in the area for the last forty years or so. And every time we come, we're just astounded at the improvements over on Seventh Street. And it's like, okay, I mean, this is the same thing. It's the same thing we always see everywhere we move. Um, let's make the library, keep it, keep it, make it a priority. Because so many people can't get from it, not just, not just a few, and I don't know about anybody else. I played sports when I was a kid. I'm not a sports fan now. I don't have time for it. And, you know, I don't even, I don't even know, um, anybody who's gone to major leagues or anything like that. So it's fun and it's good to play sports and there's so much you learn by it. But again, it's just, and maybe, maybe some of this money is shuffled around and, and maybe we just don't even think about using the library. And make it, you know, the question for us. Um, I think that's all I can say. And maybe, you know, the question for us, so, um, I think God can say.
Hello, thank you. I want to thank everyone who has already talked tonight because there's a large crowd. Yeah, this is hard to do. I have my assistant partner here. Um, my name's Sarah Brown, uh, I'm a mental health counselor here in Grant County. Technically a social worker, but, um, I'm speaking less on behalf of myself and more on behalf of people that I serve in this county that don't have mailing addresses or are good here or internet to figure out if this meeting is going on. Um, there's a lot of peo, there's a lot of people in town, they don't have access to internet, they don't have access to knowledge and, and the library provides so much more than just books and provides connection and support. People go there, they apply for jobs there, they've made their resumes there. That's how they achieve the American dream, is by utilizing the library. We've had, there's been a lot of things that have not materialized in, in Grant County in the past and the library is kind of this last straw. Like, it's one of the few places where there's a escape for people that don't have great home lights. Um, they can go there, connect with people. Everyone who works there is kind, we all know it. Um, it's one of the few places where people put their phones down. We all need to put our phones down, especially kids. And what I love about this group is that there's every age, every age here is a library. Like, it's, it's consistent, it keeps people going, it's a spot to get away. It's a place to explore your curiosity and rage against the machine, even though I didn't get to mention it in that text. I agree. Um, so, I actually don't use the library a lot because I work all the time when the library is open. But I love that so many people do get to use it. I do listen to a lot of audio, though, because I also drive a lot and I really appreciate that. But there's, I'm not the important one here, I concentrate in buying books and giving them out and not getting them back, so I can take advantage of them. Um, but the library is so important. It's, it's our, it's, it's what the American dream is. Technically, the American dream is the belief that everyone can achieve success, prosperity, and a better life through hard, hard, hard work and determination. And a library is a huge part of that. Um, and, and realistically, the cost of this, or the tax in the district, is about the equivalent of more than that. Maybe the calories. So I'm going to keep it forward this way, but my assistant partner has something to say.
No, I'm not.
That's still fine.
Hi, um, I know most of you, I'm a kid who grew up here with grandparents here and parents here who has always been deeply involved in this community. Our family had a rule that you went away for a minimum of three years and found a partner not of this community before you were allowed to come back. And I did just that and came back to take care of my parents, my grandparents, my extended family. Uh, with the idea that I could give back to a whole community, they would also provide resources for the children that I was going to raise here. And it's been heartbreaking the last five, six years to be in this community and to be raising young children and watch us slowly lose not just our neighborly spirit and our heart, but the actual resources that we had when I was a kid or my parents had as children here. And a lot of it is happening statewide, nationwide. People are losing their general investment and respect in community goods as we become more and more siloed due to technology. But we're at a point now where each of our elementary schools has twenty or fewer kindergarteners. There's single kindergarten classrooms. And when we talk to applicants who are considering moving here with their families to buy property and invest in community here, the lack of a pool, the lack of certain sports availability, it's turning people away from our community. I think on the twenty twenty census, our county's median age was sixty-two. Um, and while I love that we provide some resources for folks that are retiring, if we continue to lose resources that make it safe and productive for young families like our own to live here, we will lose more important things, like the ability to run a fairgrounds, the ability to keep a repel crew at the airport that funds that facility and program. We, we're at a point where we feel guilty raising our kids because of so many of the opportunities that they're missing. Yes, I'm teaching them how to grow food in the ground and they have access to the mountains and clean water that don't exist in a bigger city. But there is so much loss in just having so few children around them, having so few common community meeting places and things to participate in. And losing the library is not an option. I know we're here to talk about ideas and we can throw spaghetti at the walls, but in the handful of parents with kids my children's age that I've spoken to in the last couple of weeks, the library is the last straw for a lot of us. And that includes those of us that have aging parents and grandnuns here. Our parents are willing to move away with us now. And a community that doesn't have children and young families in it is no longer a safe place for anyone to live. Uh, so I just urge you guys to email and call and throw all the spaghetti at the walls because there are Gates Foundations and micro grants and four H. We have a national monument, we have a national forest, we have one of the most impressive state parks I think Oregon has to offer right in the middle of John Day and we can't have all of these rich sites and things for people to come visit and not have an infrastructure and community members that are here to greet them. Thanks.
Pardon?
I'm at the end of the list.
I'm sorry.
Are we at the end of the list?
Uh, I'm going to go check.
Okay.
So, okay, thanks, Susan.
Sure.
So, uh, I hope everybody will forgive me on the table library committee, but from what I'm hearing from you tonight, that you want the library. You have lots of ideas and lots of questions. I don't want to take up anybody's time if they want to speak, but if anybody wants to stay after and ask twice things and maybe share.